Good evening and welcome to Barrow County's. I'm, my brain just went blank. May 27th, yes, meeting. We will start with the superintendent's report, sorry.
Yes ma'am, thank you. First, I want to start by introducing a couple of new team members. So we've got Ms. Megan Crowley, who's our new executive assistant to the superintendent. Welcome Megan. And we have Dr. Catherine Brown, our new chief academic officer. I think everybody's gotten a chance to meet each other at this point, but welcome Dr. Brown. We're glad you're here. And as far as the system update, just want to point out, we were able to celebrate our high school graduations last week and had great weather, three wonderful events to kind of put the, put the bow on our school year. And I just want to say thank you to this board. I want to say thank you to our staff. It has been an incredibly challenging school year, but the people in this room and a whole lot of people outside of this room, when they say they're committed to putting students first, they truly mean that, not only with their words, but with their actions. And we were able to provide a lot of opportunities for our students this school year because we kept moving forward. And I'm just really proud of the work that our team in Barrow County is, is doing and will continue to do. And that concludes my report this evening.
All right, before we move to presentations and discussions, Ms. Maluf is out of town, but she is joining us virtually. So we will begin with Dr. Darby. I think Dr. Bowen is out of town.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox. Good evening to the board. Good evening to Dr. Leduff. And thank you for allowing me to be here to talk about the code of conduct for a second. So in regards to the Barrow County School Systems Code of Conduct for SY 2526, we are, we're requesting to move from the public review to the consent agenda. Please note that we left this open for review for an extra 30 days because of no response. So just want to make that note to you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Did we not get any responses after the additional 30 days, Dr. Darby?
Dr. Bowen mentioned one email, and we feel like after review, that our code of conduct does cover what was needed there.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Any more?
I know Dr. Bowen's not here this evening, but can you just take a note back to him? I just, from the board, I really want to get an update on the School Dog app.
Yes.
We've all been able to see that in our Clean and Safe Schools visits that we've done, and I just kind of want to know what the district's plan is to utilize that app moving forward for next year.
Yes, sir.
And board members, I'll just give you a brief update, and Dr. Bowen will be happy to give you all some more details next week. But we had a great experience. As you know, we piloted School Dog at four schools, I believe, had a really good experience with the app. School Dog is providing the app at no additional cost for another school year, so we're going to roll that out to all of our schools and be utilizing that next year countywide.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Leduff moved to consent. All right. Ms. Houston, Business Services.
All right, good evening. My first item tonight is about band instruments. So we all know band instruments are very expensive, but they do last a long time. Barrow County School System funds initial large instrument purchases when schools open, but does not really set aside funds for instrument purchases going forward. This is normally accomplished by fundraising or from booster support. We have an opportunity to use unspent, unspent funds from one of our positions that we didn't fill in fiscal year 2025 budget for a one-time instructional instrument purchase. We will transfer these funds over to the capital projects funds and bring back the bids once we identified the needed instruments for board approval. So we're asking, the superintendent recommends transferring $117,000 from the general fund to the capital projects fund to give each high school $30,000, each middle school $6,000, and C-FIT $3,000 for instructional instruments.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Houston. I just have one question. I didn't, my apologies, I didn't see it earlier. So this was an unfilled or unneeded position that we're going to utilize those funds for?
An unfilled position.
So there may be an opportunity to create that position again on the position control?
We took it out of our positions going forward.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions?
No.
All right, moved to consent.
All right, we are going to move forward now into the general fund budget, the other funds budget, and the millage rate. I had an opportunity to go through all of this, all these presentations with you all individually, and so this is going to be a brief summary, but please stop and ask any questions as we go through these. All right, we're going to start with the general fund, and as always, our decisions will focus on our vision and mission. Our vision boldly committed to student success, mission ensuring an exceptional education that leads each student to becoming a high, achieving, and responsible citizen. We also make sure all decisions follow and support our strategic plan, and we have the four focus areas, academic and student success, communications and culture, elevating the teaching profession, and finances and infrastructure. For fiscal year 2026, our major budget guidelines and goals were to sustain and improve a quality basic education for all students, provide teachers with access to equitable resources and training to ensure quality education experiences, and improve academic achievement for all students, support special education students through the provisions and supervision of a variety of strong special education programs intended to improve quality instruction in the least restrictive environment, continue our focus on the enhancement of safety and security across the district, to care for existing assets while planning for and responding to the many challenges associated with rapid growth and evolving market conditions, to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students, teachers, and staff, to invest in our people by continuing to make Barrow County School System competitive with neighboring school systems and other job sectors, elevating the teaching profession by continuing to build on our recruitment, induction, and mentoring programs, and identify and support future educators through an innovative Grow Our Own program. Sorry. Thank you, Megan. One, one slide forward, sorry. Okay. Our process is zero-based budgeting. We don't add 10% to everyone's budget. They all have to start at zero and identify their needs, review of staffing allotments with all departments and schools, submission of budgets from all departments, review of budgets by business services, review by executive cabinet, and then present to the board for approval. As you know, we really only have two sources of income for which we have little to no control over. Property taxes is one, and we believe that the tax digest will increase by 3% net of the age-based tax exemption. All calculations were based on a 15.5 millage rate, and our millage rate estimated rollback for fiscal year 2026 for House Bill 581 purposes was 15.5. The QBE funding is our second source of funds, and we believe there will be a $3.2 million increase in our state funding. The T A B T or car taxes should bring in $7 million. Our interest rates are up, so that will bring in an additional $2 million, and indirect cost is much lower this year due to not having S R funds. So here's our 2026 budgeted revenue numbers. We plan, we budget to bring in $213.3 million, which is an increase of $7.7 million from the previous year. Now we'll go into our expenditures and how we're going to spend those revenues. Our state mandates below, teacher retirement system and health insurance, that will be $61.8 million of our budget. And this is just a sample of our certified staff and their, their gross earnings and then combined with their benefits. So 57% of the amount that we pay out for a T4 teacher is their earnings, and then the rest of it is benefits. Then the same with the, here's some examples of our non-certified staff, so we do invest a lot in our staff. Included in this budget is our annual local system step increase of $2,387,000 for eligible certified and classified employees per their salary scale. We're also be conducting a salary study in the fall to see if we are equitable and competitive with our neighbors. And we have a 403B match, 3% for our Pisa employees. Those are our transportation, some of our maintenance, and our school food nutrition employees. And we'll give $150 stipend for our new teacher orientation. For instruction, we have 6.51 net instructional positions district-wide. This is down from 2025 where we had 45.5. In 2024, we had 64 additional positions because we opened Austin Road Elementary School, and 40 in 2023. So we are really zoning in on what teachers we need and making sure we have that staff available. We have textbooks for growth and replacement, formative online assessments, Amplify and Dibbles for K-5, Myon reading licenses, and Georgia Virtual School and Edmentum license for middle and high. For our academic support, we have stipend for teacher mentors. We have our Grow Our Own program support, trying to get our, our students to become our teachers, the foothill program for Barrow County students, and the learning management system in middle and high school. For investment in our student health and safety, we're having one additional psychologist. We're going to create some campus mapping software and radio replacements in some of our schools. We'll also be opening the Performing Arts Center out at Bassa this year. So this is what our overall expenditures look like. $224 million, that's up from last year by $2.6 million. And so that looks like it's going to be about a net deficit of $10.6 million. We're always real proud that we spend about 75, 76.5% in the classroom. 16.8 is for operations, that's our transportation, maintenance department, business services, and administration is 6.64% of our budget. 88.62% of our budget is salaries and benefits, so it doesn't leave a whole lot of money for everything else, but that is 11.38%. So this is what our fund balance looks like. As we've talked about before, we love to have three months of fund balance just sitting there ready for those disasters that may come or may happen. GFOA recommends no less than two months, and so that would be $37.3 million. So our fund balance has increased mostly over the COVID years due to those S R federal funds, but we always have to keep in mind of what we need to spend that money on. Right now, our, but our, our fund balance at the end of 2024 was $89 million. And so we do have some big capital projects that may come up that we want to spend some of this fund balance on. We have our synergic badges that will come due in fiscal year 2029, literacy materials in the future, healthcare costs, our age-based tax exemption, we may need to use our fund balance to cover some of that, decrease in federal funds, more than likely that won't happen, but if it does, that's about a $9 million expense that we'll have to cover at least for a year, and then figure out what to do after that happens. And then future austerity cuts from the state, which would happen if we have another downfall like we did in 2010. And so some people are looking at, at what's happening with our tax digest, and that's a, that's what this graph is, and it looks similar to the 2008, 2010 era of that high, and then going down a little bit, and then, so there may be an economic downturn in the future. Hopefully it won't be, but we just always have to be prepared for those things, and having a fund balance will help us get through those years. So the superintendent, we feel we would like to assign some of our fund balance. Right now, after this year, we're projecting on June, on July 1st, 2025, that we'll have $83 million for our fund balance. But we would like to assign $1.5 million for future security enhancements. Those would be our synergic badges, $2.5 million for future literacy materials when those come due in 2029, and then $12 million for future capital projects. So we would like to assign $16 million of our fund balance, and so that would leave an unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2025 of $67 million. So we will start next year with $67 million as our fund balance unassigned, and you'll see our revenues of $213 million, our expenditures $224 million. So we'll dip into that $67 million unassigned fund balance by $10.6 million, leaving an unassigned fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2026 of $56.3 million. And this is just more detail of the general fund budget that you guys will be voting on next week. So that is the end of the general fund presentation, so we're going to, we're going to vote on that next week, June 3rd, and then hold two public hearings, one on June 12th, one on June 23rd, and if all goes well, you'll vote for the final approval of the budget on June 24th. Okay, I'm going to move on to the other funds budget. This is much quicker. These are, these are our other funds, capital projects, debt service, federal funds, and then our state funds. And this is what the, that total budget looks like, our special revenue funds, a[1409.72][1409.75]$26.2 million income, $26.6 million in expenditures, so there'll be a little deficit of $372,000, but we can cover that with our fund balance. For our capital projects, $23.3 million in revenue, $51.4 million in expenditures, so that would leave a $28 million deficit, but we sold bonds this year for our capital projects, so we have $66 million waiting for, waiting to be used next year. And then our debt service, $13.9 million in revenue, $12.9 million in expenditures, so we'll make a little bit money there, and it will go into our fund balance for future debt. Now we'll move on to our millage rate. Property taxes account for approximately 32% to 34% of the district's general fund revenues for fiscal year '23 and '24. All real property and all personal property are taxable unless the property has been exempted by law. Real property is land, and generally anything that is erected or affixed to the land. Vehicles, usually older, they are, they're still in the birthday tax, they're product, part of the property tax digest. The contents of your household are not normally taxable unless they are used for a home-based business. This is our tax digest per year. As that tax digest grows and increases, so do our student numbers. So we've increased students by 3,504. 812 sped students we've increased since 2007. Our gifted has gone from 318 to 856 from 2010 to 2025, and our ESOL students have gone up from 181 to 519 from 2010 to 2025. School tax, this is school tax by student compared to our surrounding counties. And then here is the millage rate comparison for districts that are similar or surrounding us. So you can see we're definitely not at the top of that scale, which is good. We have our current exemptions, so of course, everybody gets a $2,000 exemption if you own a home. And then we have our local exemptions for our seniors. So for our 670-plus, if their income from social security retirement is under $96,000 and all other income under $113,000, they are fully exempt from school taxes for up to five acres in one home. For our 62 to 70-year-olds, they can make $96,432 in social security and retirement, $60,000 in all other income, and they will have an exemption of $140,000. That's a typo up there, and I apologize. So they get a, so $350,000 home would be exempt if they qualify. And other exemptions are available for our veterans, conservation, income from, in the poverty level. This is what, our age-based tax exemption is brand new for this year, so this is a pre, this is a look back at 2024. We had 8,565 exemptions last year. This year, we have 10,024. And so our current, last year's exemptions was for, cost us, I don't really want to say cost us, but it exempted $4.7 million in taxes from the school system. And for 2025, it's exempting $7.7 million in tax revenue from the school system. So right now, the difference is $2.9 million. We kind of estimated that it was going to be around four or 4.1, so we may have some more come in next year that didn't get their taxes done this year. So this is just a reminder that we did budget for $67.5 million, and that was based on a 15.5 millage rate, and that would have given us a $10 million, $10.6 million deficit if we are able to budget the 15.5 mills. And so this is the decision that the board has to make and where they want that millage rate to land. 15.5 is of course the, the top row. The rollback rate is a 15.193, that's the second row. If we go back to the, the 15.193 rollback, it would increase our projected net loss to $11.9 million from $10.6 million. And then you can just see all the other millage rates. Down at the bottom is where we would break even at a 17.982. Are there any questions?
Just looks like some of the numbers may be off at 16.0. Just something to fix for future.
I'm sorry.
At the 16.0 millage, the loss decreases instead of?
That's correct, because our loss would be less. So it would go from $10 million to $8 million if we go up to 16.0. Oh, okay, okay. I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Thank you, I apologize. Yep, you're exactly right. It would be less of a, of a loss, but it just wouldn't be that much less. I apologize. Thank you for that.
Ms. Houston, I'd just like to thank all the staff. I know that this budget has been a hard press for us as a board. A lot of us are new to this, and I just want to thank the staff for all their diligence and working through the request of fiscal responsibility while ensuring that all of our students' needs are met in every one of our classrooms. So thank you all so much.
All right, so on June 3rd, you're going to approve a tentative millage rate. So on June 3rd, you're gonna approve a tentative millage rate, and then we'll have those three public hearings. And then at the end, on July 8th, we'll vote on the final millage rate and get that over to the county so they can vote on their millage rate. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Purno.
Good evening. System Operations has three information items tonight and two action items. In our first information item, we have an update on the classroom pod at Wyandotte Barrow High School. Let me show you some photos of that, but but we're on schedule. Site work continues as well as work on finishes in the interior of the pod, the ceiling grid going in, low voltage wiring, lights, and casework. So we're coming along well there. We expect to be done by the end of June there and have our greenhouses on site in June. We'll begin to work on those as well there at Wyandotte Barrow and Appalachia. Okay.
Will those greenhouses be complete by the time school starts back, Mr. Purno?
Yes, sir. They will. Okay. Our next information item tonight is an update on our athletics improvement package. Cunningham Forehand Matthews and Moore was approved as architects for System Athletic Improvement Package several weeks ago. The next step in putting together the team who will plan, budget, and develop the project is to select a construction manager. A request for proposals has been advertised as of May 13. A pre-proposal meeting will be held on May 29 with interested firms. That's a mandatory meeting, and that'll sort of set who is eligible to to submit proposals. Proposal submissions are due June 10, at which point they will be reviewed by System Operations and our architect. And our hope is that we can provide a recommendation for a construction manager at the June 24 work session. Any questions on that item? All right, I'm gonna ask Mr. Webb to step up and take this last information item.
Thank you. All right. In the spring of 2023, the Board of Education approved an annual contract with Republic Waste for removal of trash waste from all Barrow County schools via closed containers and open-top dumpsters. The contract is renewable annually for up to four years and has provisions for annual cost increases per the CPI index. The maximum purchase order amount for fiscal year '26 will be increased by $16,119 from the fiscal year '25 amount in accordance with the contract provisions as follows. 5% CPI increase of $11,350 and increased services at four locations for $4,769. The financial impact is the new fiscal year '26 maximum purchase amount with Republic Waste will be $243,118. Thank you.
Okay. We have two action items this evening. The first is renovation work at CFIT. We're asking the superintendent to recommend acceptance of a guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $241,478 for renovations to improve CFIT. In November of 2021, the board approved Charles Black Construction as construction manager for non-state funded projects. Projects over $25,000 in value are to be brought to the board for approval. This project would be funded through SPOST. And these building modifications are necessary at the front lobby and admin areas to create the same type of closed investibule as we have at all other schools. Door and window modifications are needed at multiple areas to further secure student, visitor, and vendor points of ingress and egress. Additional work would take place to better accommodate AIM program students and staff, including the modification of one large classroom into two spaces. And the gymnasium would also be painted as part of this scope of work. Any questions on that item? For our second action item, we're asking the superintendent to recommend extending the development of a new local facilities plan by one year. The state DOE requires local systems to develop a facilities plan each five-year period. This request would move the date for Barrow's local facilities plan to be complete to the spring of 2027. Our facilities plan is set to expire in June of '26, but the plan is actually assembled in the fall and winter of 2025 with certification by the state in the spring of '26. The one-year extension is requested so that development of the plan can take place after our systems strategic planning process has been completed. There's no financial impact. We don't lose any state dollars. Our state dollars continue to accumulate annually and per established DOE rules and regulations. So we're just asking to push this back so the strategic plan can get in front of it, and then that would inform how we build our local facilities plan. Any questions with that? All right. Thank you all.
Good evening, and thank you. There are three action items for teaching and learning. And for the first one, I'm going to ask Dr. James to join me at the podium for into reading
Good evening. We are coming to the board for approval for our HMH into reading and math training for our special education teachers as well as new elementary teachers that will be joining us for the '25-'26 school year. Since this will make our total payout to HMH over $75,000 for this school year, we wanted to come back to you all for approval. The professional development sessions for both into reading and into math are specifically designed to support teachers with ensuring that they are well-prepared to implement our district-adopted curriculum effectively. These trainings will strengthen teachers' understanding of the resources and instructional strategies needed to meet the diverse learning needs of all of our students. By investing in the success of our new teachers, we are directly supporting our district goal of academic and student success through stronger instruction and greater instructional consistency across classrooms. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of professional learning services from HMH for our into reading and into math. The total cost of these training services will be $8,400 to be paid out of general Thank you.
For the second item, we'll move to the foothills budget expenditure. On January 28, 2025, the Board of Education approved an allocation of $384,000 to support continued learning with students impacted by the events of September 4, 2024. This initial allocation covered the costs of the first semester of the school year, '24-'25, and the anticipated cost for the second semester. In response to the ongoing student needs, the district has maintained virtual learning options into the second semester as well. With this expanded access, we've had to accommodate more students due to additional enrollment requests at foothills. The cost for the second semester totals $412,381.70, which does exceed the original allocation by $220,538.70. The total for the year is $604,579. So the recommendation is that the budget expenditure be increased to that amount of That's the total amount. The additional cost for the second semester is the $220,538.70. Any questions? And for the third teaching and learning action item, I would like to welcome Mrs. Amy Wadley to the podium for special education contracted services for school year '25-'26.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight to present an action item that will support our students with disabilities. So I was here roughly a year ago presenting at the same podium for a very similar action item. We all know Barrow County is rapidly growing, and with that, our special education population is growing as well. And with that, it means that we have an increased need for special education evaluations and services, which includes speech therapy, behavioral and academic support, nursing services, direct instruction from our special education teachers, and so on. But unfortunately, the applicant pool right now is limited at this point in time, which makes it challenging to feel confident about being able to fulfill these needs for our students. Doesn't mean we won't, but we want to be prepared just in case we can't find some folks by the time the school year starts in August. So as of May 20th, I didn't check it today, but as of May 20th, we had many key positions that were unfilled. At that time, there were 13 special education positions unfilled, one and a half speech-language pathologists, one school psychologist, and about 10 paraprofessionals. Also, we do need a one-to-one nurse for one of our students, and I would also like to request that we could have permission to have a one-to-one nurse just on reserve, the the ability to contract with one, should we have a student move in who has that requirement and that need on their IEP. And finally, we are requesting two registered behavior technicians through contract to support the implementation of behavior intervention plans, data collection, support skill development within the classroom, and also to collaborate with staff regarding effective behavior strategies in the classroom. So to address the staffing challenges that we are experiencing, we propose continuing to move beyond traditional hiring methods if we need to by opening new contracts with Soliant Health, The Stepping Stones Group, Caris Rehabilitation, Ideal Schools, Amerigis, and Expressive Pediatric Therapy. These partnerships have been successful in filling various needs during the current school year and in previous school years, and we hope that they could provide an effective alternative this coming school year, should we need to rely on them to fill some of these positions. The supporting documents are attached. I see that you guys were taking a peek at those. For financial impact, the FY '26 general fund budget does include funds to cover these contracts for all the aforementioned positions, with the exception of the nurses, the LPNs, and the registered behavior technicians. Medicaid reimbursement funds would be used to cover the nurse services, the nursing services, and the registered behavior technicians will be funded through the IDEA grant. And then you see a breakdown of what the maximum cost could be. So through all these different contracts, they have different pricing. So what I put here was the maximum rate. We are always looking for the qualified candidate, but we want to be fiscally responsible and try to go with what is more affordable. But for example, one and a half SLPs, the maximum amount amount is $90 an hour, so that could cost $205,200. One school psychologist, up to $105 an hour for $159,600, and so on. If all of these positions were filled, the maximum cost would be $2740,840. So the superintendent recommends that the Barrow County school system enter a contract with Soliant Health LLC, The Stepping Stones Group, Caris Rehabilitation, Ideal Schools, Amerigis Staffing, and Expressive Pediatric Therapy to provide special education evaluations and services to Barrow County students with disabilities for up to $2740,840.
So that's roughly 29 and a half positions, right?
Yeah. This year, we ended up using 14, just to kind of anchor you and and what we ended up using this year. So we had one nurse. We didn't end up needing another nurse, but we did have one on reserve. Three SLPs is what we contracted with. We had five teachers that we contracted with, one RBT, and four parapros. So that's what we ended up using this year. We had a similar request last year, but that is what we ended up needing was 14 total this year.
Two million, the total would be 29 and a half.
Ms. Wadley, if you could, I would really like to know if any, and you don't have to have this information today, but if any other district, I know that this is a commonality amongst districts filling these special needs and more of the self-contained roles as well, what other districts are doing to keep those teachers that are high need in their system, if any? I just want to know if there's anything that they're doing different than what we are here.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
I will get that for you. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, everyone.
That concludes the teaching and learning report.
Good evening. As our school year comes to a close and we head into summer, we wanted to be able to provide you with a quick hiring update where we are right now. As you know, our school and district leaders have been working to recruit and hire for the 2025-2026 school year, really since early February. And as you may recall, the first step in that process is us working through our internal transfers to allow our staff to be not only where they want to be, but where they can best serve our students. So as of last Friday, we have processed 66 internal transfers within our system. And as we work towards getting the best fit for our existing staff, we're also recruiting and hiring those employees that may be retiring or leaving our system. As of last Friday, we have been able to hire 180 new employees, 160 certified staff members, and 20 classified staff members as we prepare for the fall. Our principals and our HR team were really looking forward to June 1st. And the reason for that is because prior to June 1st, there's really no consequence for an employee breaking their contract. Our licensing agency, the Georgia Professional Standards Commission, sets June 1st as the deadline for that. So we really hope to see some stability as we move into June. June is still considered peak hiring season for us, so the information that we have is changing really every hour. And so we'll continue to keep you updated as we move into June and have more detailed information for you as we get closer to July. All right? Questions? All right.
Good evening. We have two items of information and three action items for the board this evening. I'm gonna do the information items fairly quickly, and I'm not gonna ask Ms. Valles and Ms. Persinger to come up on this, but I do want to point out a few things in these documents that underscore some of the things you've already heard tonight. So Megan, if you would open up the communications report for me, please. We always provide the April communications, or it's obviously gonna be one month behind on this. I want to point out a couple of things on here. If you go to the very second page, Megan, you're there, thank you. We, the board in January voted to change our policy on internal transfers. And I mentioned in our last work session that we were in that process. I wanted to point out a couple of things, one of which was we went to great lengths, both using remind, but also social media and our website to really try to help parents know this window for transfer was available to them. We hit them multiple times over the course of three weeks to try to make sure they were aware. So we really went out of our way, since this was a very large change the board approved to our internal transfer policy, to try to make sure parents were aware of that. We did have a total of 129 parents apply. Once we went through and eliminated those who either changed their mind and pulled out or who applied for grades and subjects that were not eligible, because we had certain schools where they're just we were over capacity, but we had parents apply for them anyway. Once we winnowed that down, we had 100. Once we winnowed that down, we had 103 total requests for transfer to an eligible grade level, and I'm happy to say we were able to accommodate all 103 parents. So we're in the process of getting those formal letters out to parents in the next week or so. So they will be informed of that. But we were very pleased that went about as well as it could have, so we were appreciative. What we wanted to point out, a lot of work went in on the communication staff's end to make sure parents were aware of that, since that was a pretty large-scale change. As we're kind of flipping through this, you can see engagement. We obviously had, we were very excited about Ms. Lancaster's award that she got. If you'll keep going, Megan. You keep going a little bit farther towards the very end. I just wanted to point out, one more. There we go. So one of the things we try to do each month is to underscore which sites on our webpages are getting the most hits. And this does change month to month depending on certain circumstances. So a few things I wanted to point out here, which is, you'll notice Appalachian Winder's homepages were very high. That makes some sense as we're getting close to graduation. Things are being put out. Parents are looking for that. But I wanted to point out a couple of things on there. Some things stay on there year-round. Calendar is always something parents are looking at, community members are looking at. But two things that have spiked up, Ms. McNally mentioned, we're in the hiring season. You'll notice four and five, our main HR page and our HR salary page, were two of the most visited pages during the month of April, and that was also true in March, and I suspect it will be true in May as well, because it is the hiring season. And Ms. Houston mentioned we're going to be doing a salary study. It really underscores, and Mr. Callaway's point about, you know, what systems are doing, one of the key things is equitable compensation. So that's one of the pieces that the salary study we hope will do. But I wanted to point out the fact, you can actually see this in our web traffic, how much that for prospective employees is coming up, because what will happen is, I promise you, that will drop off once we get into the summer and the hiring season has slowed down. So you can notice sort of trends of things with our communication reports. So thank you, Megan. The second piece, Megan, if you'll pull up the last day of school count, one of the things several of our speakers have mentioned is the fact that, you know, rapid growth and how we accommodate that. This is our last day of school count. One of the things you'll notice, if you'll go to that second page, that has the sort of comparison over the last seven years. This was, and we mentioned this to the board in earlier presentation, we'd had three consecutive cycles of growth of 300 to 600 students per year. And the level of development that's going on in Barrow County is substantial, such that we would anticipate more. But we did have a rather unusual year in that we, for the first time non-COVID since probably the Great Recession, we did not see significant student enrollment growth. That's a complex question, but we are continuing to monitor economic conditions in the housing market. And also, we will be, over the summer, routinely looking at new enrollments as they come in there, because we need to get a grip on whether or not this is, as Ms. Houston said, the beginning of an economic downturn, or whether or not it was a one-year anomaly, and that growth is still going to come. So that's something that we are expending a lot of time trying to make sure, because it was not an expected thing for us. But we're continuing to keep our finger on the pulse of that, because we can build houses, they have to be sold ultimately. So that's your last day of enrollment count. So I'm now going to ask Mr. St. Clair to come up to go through three action items for you this evening.
Thank you. As part of our ongoing five-year technology refresh cycle, 120 high-end graphics workstation desktop computers are sought to replace end-of-life computers in labs where advanced graphics are in need, such as audio/video classes, CAD, and so forth. An RFP was posted, and a whopping 33 vendors responded. Hypertech low bid met the terms of the RFP. They have an A rating and no complaints listed with the Better Business Bureau. I apologize, did not get this in my rationale, but I did contact a couple of their other school districts that they had as references and got glowing reviews, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. We're also seeking authorization to use this RFP for any additional high-end graphics workstation desktop computer purchases required between now and July 31, 2025, subject, of course, to normal board reporting and approval guidelines. The financial impact would be $119,640 from ITS Splosh Technology Refresh Funds, and should there be any additional purchases, $997 per unit from whichever budget is making the purchase. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of high-end graphics workstation desktop computers. Low bid respondent Hypertech USA of Tempe, Arizona, in the amount of 997 per unit, 120 units, for a total of $119,640, and further authorization to use this RFP for any additional high-end graphics workstation desktop computer purchases through July 31, 2025, subject to normal board approval and reporting guidelines.
I just have one question. So these are to update the older monitors or desktop?
Older desktops that are five, six years old, and they're doing the AVTF classes, and they need dedicated graphics cards, double the amount of RAM and all that.
So just out of curiosity, what happens to the old?
We currently have a surplus vendor who takes our surplus equipment. They evaluate it, they, it's a shoehorn operation. They do it all for us. They come, they take it, they evaluate it for us, they clean it up, and then they put it out to bid for us for a profit share. And then, so that's worked really well for us for the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next one, jar systems charging stations. As part of our one-to-one Chromebook deployment, a need for middle and high school charging solutions became evident. Elementary schools already have charging carts in their, in their each homeroom, because there's state in the homeroom instead of going with the students. A product line was chosen and an RFP posted for which 11 responses were received. Low bid respondent Conquest met the terms of the RFP. They've done other business with the district before. They were able to provide proof of their supply chain for the proposal, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. We will be purchasing the following combination of products from this response. You can see the little table there below. And that'll allow us to provide each middle and high school classroom, one charging station, which is a bay that has six docks for charging up to six devices at a time, and a battery that can be used to charge a Chromebook while a student is sitting at their desk, rather than leaving the Chromebook across the room. Also, a larger 12-bay charging station for each middle and high school media center. The financial impact is $330,305 from Splosh One-to-One Support Funds for the initial purchase. And I apologize, did not mention this in the rationale, but we are asking for approval to use this RFP for any additional purchases, again, through July 31, 2025. So the financial impact there would be from various budgets for any additional purchases through the end of July. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of jar systems charging stations from low bid respondent Conquest of Snowville, Georgia, in the amount of $330,305, and further authorizing the use of this response for any additional purchases through July 31, 2025, subject to normal board approval and reporting guidelines.
Is that, is that for additional computers at the school, Mr. St. Clair? Because if it's one-to-one at high school, don't they take them back and forth a lot?
They take them back and forth a lot. We did not provide charging stations for use in the school the first year. There were a couple of reasons. One was financial. We had burnt out the budget. The other one was, really needed to see if middle and high school students would bring charged devices to school on a reliable basis, and I'll leave that there. Okay. The last item, cohesity backup solution. As part of our normal improvement process, to ensure we are using technologies that best suit the district's needs, we are replacing our current district backup system, and it goes end of contract in July of 2025, with the cohesity backup solution. An RFP was posted, six responses were received. Sherlock Technology met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with the district satisfactorily in the past, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. I'll note that Sherlock and Kapeski are the same company. If you look at their SAM.gov approval rating, that's the parent company's name. We require all vendors to, we required all vendors to give us an estimate for yearly renewals through year five, as shown. Should the actual costs exceed the given estimate, we will competitively shop for quotes as per board purchasing guidelines. Multiple quotes under 75, bringing to you approval for over 75. The financial impact is $90,577 from ITS funds for year one, an estimated total of $329,387 over five years from ITS funds. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of the cohesity backup solution from low bid respondent Sherlock Technology of Beaufort, Georgia, in the amount of $90,577, $90,577 for year one, and an expected five-year total of $329,387. Thank you.
Unless there are no other questions on any of those items, we are finished for the evening. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to commend Ms. Trunk. Dr. Thompson, I noticed school nutrition was at the top of the list of most visited sites. I can only assume that since school has closed for a couple of months, people are looking for some recipes to keep it, keep it rocking through the summer. So thank you, Ms. Trunk, for all the work your team has done all year.
All right. Now we'll move into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer, employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
A sense of pride, because I finally found out the error that was causing everything. It was usually, I typed something wrong, or I put in the wrong variable, and when I finally just saw that little mistake and fixed it, everything started working. Everything was fluent. Everything started going along like it was lively. And I was so happy to see this thing I was working on for the past, like, month, two weeks, day even, start working again. And I was always so happy. If I had to pick someone from everyone I've ever met, it has to be Ms. Knowles. Ms. Knowles has been my computer science teacher for the longest time. I've had her through APCSP game design, APCSA, and even now in work-based learning, I go to her and ask her questions, and she still knows the answers to all of them. Ms. Knowles is a very, very good teacher. She'll always just, like, stand up, walk around, help people with problems. She'll never say something like, just look it up on Google. She'll go to it, see the problem, say, how can we work through this together? My future plans right now for graduation are kind of iffy, I'd say. Right now, I'm, I've been accepted into UGA. I've also been given the honor of getting an internship at Lockheed Martin. My parents want me to go to college, so I will. In the short, the short and sweet of it, I'm going to college, because my parents asked me to, and I love my parents. My biggest dream right now is, if I get out of college, get an internship, get a job, in my free time, start making a video game, which I'm very proud of. I've had this idea in my head for years, for this video game. It's just generally, I need this experience on how to program, how to draw, how to make music, do all these things, how to make a video game in general. What's the process? I'm trying to get as much experience as I can right now, and through work-based learning, through people, through talking to other people in general, just learn how to make things, make a video game. I've a lot of small, tiny accomplishments that I'm very proud of, things I can't even remember, but I know happened, that I'm always happy about. But if I had to name something, it'd be what I'm doing right now. Working on the Mono Project, which is a website I started from scratch when I didn't even know how to make a website, how to know how to make an interactable interface with a website, all this and that, and communicate with an SQL, a database, that actually stores all this information. When I started my work-based learning semester, like, last semester, I had absolutely no clue what I was doing, what I was willing to learn. And I learned from every possible source I could. It's really taught me a lot about cybersecurity, how to build a website, how to maintain a website, what the process is to build and create and maintain all this and that for a simple website. I think the biggest accomplishment right now I've had in high school is the connections I've made along this whole path, through not only engineering software, but through with people, too. I know how to communicate better. I know how to build. I know how to engineer. I know what it feels like to be working a part of a team. And I think that's the biggest thing you can learn from anything, how to communicate, how to work, how to work as a team. And I think that's the biggest accomplishment anyone can get. Try your best, always be willing to learn, and most importantly, never give up what you're doing. Always follow that dream, always follow the goal that you have, and never, ever let anyone tell you otherwise. Always follow the dream.
I would describe Kelly and Ben as, as family.
Ben and Kelly, we are so excited to recognize both of you as our February Community Members of the Month. We appreciate everything you pour into our community and our schools, and this is just a small token to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Our absolute pleasure.
Truly. I know Ben and Kelly McDaniel through a number of interactions I've had with them over the past five to six years in Barrow County. Ben McDaniel and I were in the same leadership Barrow class, the class of 2019, and I have gotten to know Kelly through different opportunities through the school system, like the Barrow Leadership Partnership.
Kelly has been kind of the boots-on-the-ground person with our parent education workshops. She's fantastic, of course, with children. She's a children's librarian, and she works with the parents. She's always getting a lot of compliments from, from them.
For me, it's an honor to be recognized with my wife, because even before I was in Family Connection, when I worked back in Parks and Recreation out of college, like, we've both been public servants for a very long time. And it's, it's so cool to go back to it again, that the kid that went to Auburn Elementary, Holson Beck Elementary, Bethlehem Elementary, I know I'm missing some, Wynder Bar Middle School as well, that same kid to be able to come back 20, 30 years later and just be a contributing member, like, it's the best feeling in the world for me.
Yeah, I feel honored. I mean, it's, we've worked so closely with the school system through my work for years now. I mean, seven, eight years, I've been with my role for eight years, so all eight years we've worked hand-in-hand with Barrow County. And it, yeah, I just feel honored. I feel like we're leaving a legacy of something for our kids to be proud of. And, you know, it is nice to be honored with Ben, because Ben is the very front-facing half of our couple. And I am very frequently behind the scenes, and, you know, I'm working hard, kind of, to help push other people forward. But it's really nice to be here.
I trust them so much. There are so many people in the world that, that will tell you one thing and go behind your back and say something else. But with Kelly and Ben, I know that what they say to me, they're saying to anybody else. They're just always so positive. I guess maybe that's one good word, too, for them, would be positive. They have an incredibly positive impact on the whole Barrow community.
I love the fact that I moved back to Winder, that I'm able to be a contributing member of the Barrow County Society, and being able to kind of punch in when needed to be able to make things better, whether through its coaching, or serving as a mentor, or connecting resources, or helping develop the workforce of tomorrow through Sims Academy and Linear Tech. Like, that's what it's all about for me, is making sure, not necessarily for my kids, but my kids' kids have a better future in Barrow County.
Ben is known for being a community builder. He does that through formal programs, but he also does it informally. He organizes coffee on Tuesday mornings, where everyone is welcome to come and build relationships, and get to know each other, and just be together. Kelly does the same thing. Whether she is involved in the Holson Beck School Governance Team or another organization, she is bringing people together and building relationships and having a positive impact.
Barrow County is where we've chosen to live. We don't just work here, we live here. All of our children attend the school system here. The school system has poured so much into our children. It's been, it actually makes me really emotional. I try not to cry when I talk about it, but it's really emotional seeing how much the school has done for our children through COVID, through the crazy fire that Holson Beck had to deal with last year. We have seen nothing but caring professionals pouring into our children nonstop. And so anytime we're able to give back in any kind of way to help support the school system, like, we're there.